I'd like to start the meeting. We can say I said pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and created in justice. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have no written communication. We do have the exit hall. Jean and I, when we were on with our agenda setting, Tony touched upon that. Because it didn't happen last year and not wanting people to hang around this year, and have to discuss about not doing it for this year, as much as we'd like to continue it, but to make things easier for Dev and everyone else, just to stop it for this year again. So just wanted to throw that out there to everybody. Okay?
Yes.
Did we have any committee reports?
The other committee, Matt, Mr. Bevel, myself, Mr. Tan, Mrs. Wazinski, with our outside auditors, programs, highlight. The most discussion was around discussing the 53rd section of 1099, conflictor side vendor versus a W-2 employee. And we've been in a jam for a while. You know, there's a little bit of subjectivity to that. But everything came out clean. Our vendors are treated with a 1099, our employees are treated with W-2. But we got a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion on the wind cap rights issue. This business is all over that. Part of the highlight was our auditors, great areas of concern is either 1, 2, or 3. This year, we had the 1s. So the areas that needed the highest level of focus and attention, we had none of those. So we had 2 and 3s. So Mrs. Wazinski, if you're here, what a great job.
Perfect. Anybody else?
I just wanted to mention that some of the real thing city were smaller than I thought. We all know many real things. So we met about three times in the past few weeks. I'm meeting again tomorrow. Just going over the details and like that.
Great. Anyone else? All right, then we'll turn right over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have Rick Gansy from Capital Markets. He's here to talk about an item that's on your agenda under new business. You know, if you approve, we will go through with the resolution. If not, you have the opportunity to adjust the agenda. But there's a resolution to approve refunding bond resolution for the 2011 serial bonds. Actually, Mr. Gansy reached out to Mrs. Wazinski indicating that there was some good movement in bond rates and that in order for us to be poised well to refinance when the rates reach a good point, an advantageous point for us, that we would have to pass a resolution so that we have the ability to refinance that bond. So Rick is here to provide you with a little bit of analysis to show how we may be able to save some money on some existing debt.
Welcome. Thank you, Oyu. It'll be back again. But yeah, as Tony pointed out, you know, part of our role as financial advisor to the district is to monitor opportunities, you know, as interest rates decline. As we've talked to the board over several years, giving updates on where interest rates are. Rates have come down significantly over the last several months. So we've been monitoring this opportunity to refinance essentially in a similar fashion with C, your home mortgage rates. So when interest rates go down, the district, in this particular situation, is the first opportunity to refinance these bonds because they're callable in August of 2021. So we could, the first time we can refinance these are within 90 days of call date. So it really lines up perfectly, given where the market is and where interest rates are, and the opportunity to save, to save money. So the first slide that we have here, and I'll be brief, and we have a big agenda tonight. This slide here, and I think you should have in your packages, July 14th of 2011 is when the 2011 bond issued by the district. So what we're doing here is we've bracketed sort of the two sections here, which is, in the top part is the bonds that we're looking to redeem or to call. And you'll see that that was the end of the yield curve that we issued back in 2011. And rates at the time for that particular part of the yield curve were between 3 and 1/4 and 3.75%. What we're doing now is we're essentially sliding down the yield curve and replacing those higher coupon bonds with the short end of the yield curve, which in this current market are between, you know, 25 basis points and 0.75. So we're essentially taking 3% money, 3 and 1/2% money, and replacing it with...
Is this right on?
Oh, here we go, okay. So you look in the second slide is the 2011 bonds issued in July of 2011. They have coupon rates, your interest rates ranging anywhere from 3% to 3 and 1/2%, with a total per amount of $5.2 million, with a call date of August 1st of 2021. So essentially, what we're looking to do is issue refunding bonds pursuant to tonight's resolution, issue refunding bonds in the district. Those monies that are issued by way of the refunding bond will be placed in what's called the escrow account. So the money won't flow back to the district. It'll be held in a trust account with trustee bank. Those monies are then used by the trustee to redeem the bonds when due at their call date of August 1st of 2021. So we issue the bonds, invest those in treasury securities. Those monies are held in escrow to pay off the bonds when due in August of '21. So we're looking at interest rates that were 3% to 3 and 1/2%. Under current market conditions, on a conservative scale, we would replace those bonds that were issued with 3% to 3 and 1/2% with bonds in the current market of 0.66%. So we're almost 300 basis points or 3% lower in the current market than we were back in 2011, which is remarkable. So 0.66%, we think it's conservative, but for the purposes of the board presentation, we want to build a little cushion just to pave the market mood between now and when we actually go in the market. The next is the debt service comparison. So if we replace those higher coupon bonds with bonds in the current market, we're looking at savings, debt service savings of approximately $130,000 over the life of the transaction. So you're looking at probably $30,000 to $35,000 a year in debt service savings by taking advantage of lower interest rates in the current market compared to what you otherwise would pay if the bonds remained outstanding. So that savings would start in the next fiscal year, the '22 fiscal year through the '25 fiscal year, again, between $30,000 and $35,000 a year. So after tonight, once the board, assuming the board approves the resolution, we would work closely with Laura Hursad, a bond counsel, to get together all the documents necessary to bring this district to the market, just as we would on a regular capital project bar. We put together an official statement, work with the revenue agencies again to bring the issue to the market. Once the bad resolution is adopted at tonight's meeting, the district's required to public was called an estoppel notice. An estoppel notice published in the paper that the district designates. Once that estoppel notice clears, which is a 20-day period, the district is then free to go to the bond market and sell the refunding bonds and then capture the savings with respect to the issuance of the bond. So we have that sort of 20-day waiting period that we'll work with the revenue agencies, put together all the documents, and then once that period clears, we're looking to probably be in the markets early to mid-May to sell and close the transaction. The money will then be placed in escrow. All cost of issuance that are part of the transaction are also included in the transaction. So the savings reflected is actually net of expenses. So fees with respect to bond counsel, Moody's, rating agency fees, bond counsel are all factored in the transaction. So that $130,000 projection is net of all expenses of the transaction and no expenses for cost of issuance that come out of the general fund of the district. So hopefully, that provides a good overview of the process, the concept of refunding bonds, taking advantage of low interest rates. I haven't answered any questions that anybody might have of the circular resolution that's in front of you tonight.
So the maturity value of the bonds is currently, or 5.21 million.
Correct.
If, when we refund it, it would be 5.37 million. So difference of about $160,000.
Yeah.
Is that all fees and expenses?
No, the part of it is, so when the bonds are redeemed on August 1st, the escrow will also pay interest at maturity. So the interest that's been accruing since the last interest payment in February will also be included in the escrow. So the escrow agent's going to pay interest at maturity, which is August 1st of '21, plus cost of issuance that we've estimated at, I think, $60,000, which is all the fees that would be involved, plus what's called underwriter's discount, which is the underwriters' compensation to take on the bonds when purchased on the sale date. So all those together would make up the difference between the per amount being redeemed and the new per amount on the current plan of finance.
So is the advantage of pre-refunding the August of '21 bonds, then, is that just the interest?
Yes, interest expense. Because you're really, you're placing bonds that are, you're paying out at between 3% and 3 and 1/2% with new bonds that only pay 0.66.
Well, I get that, but I guess my point is, so from May to August, it's what, we're about two months? So we're saving about 2 and 1/2, you know, 2 and 1/2%, maybe just a little bit more than that. So whatever that number is, does that get offset by the expenses to add another 1.3 in the pre-refunding?
Yeah, exactly. So right now, we have...
I understand the interest.
You said tranche.
5,002, yeah, we're taking out 5,002. Yeah, 5,002 in refunded amounts. We're placing it with 5,370, which includes all the interest expense to maturity plus expenses.
You say if you just didn't do the part that's going to be coming due anyway in August, do all the other ones, but not have the expense of the August bonds, because it doesn't seem like the cost benefit is necessarily working for that.
Or is what we're trying to figure out.
For the August...
August '21.
'21 maturity, which is non-civable. The way that we structured it, it's a great question. We've included the August '21 maturity for structuring purposes, because what we're seeing on the market as of late is that the bonds are going to be priced with a pretty high premium, 5% coupons. Obviously, the yields are going to be much lower. But what we're seeing on certain issuances as of late is that if we don't have that structuring bond provided for in the resolution, and we have 5% coupons, top to bottom at the bid, you could have a situation where the first year is negative savings and the rest are larger savings just because of the structure. So we may not include that August '21 maturity, but if we don't include it by way of the resolution that the board's ordering on tonight, we don't have flexibility after the fact to add that in for structuring purposes. So we probably, in all likelihood, won't include that when we actually go out to price the transaction. But if we don't have it included now in the resolution, we can't go back and include it because it wasn't part of the resolution. That's a great question, yeah. Because technically, it's a non-civable bond, but we included there for structuring purposes based upon the legal restrictions of having that in there now so that when we sell the transaction, we have to go back and amend the resolution to include that.
Are there any tax differences between the short-term, you know, the treasury and holding the longer term bond, given what's happening with potential taxes? I just wonder if maybe...
Yeah, so the escrow that we're going to, so let's say we sell the transactions in mid-May, close in, you know, early June. Those monies are going to be invested in what's called a state local government security, which is a slug security, which essentially is going to be invested for, you know, two months. So there's kind of a wash. So you're going to get probably 3 basis points by having that money sit in that escrow account for those two-month period. What you hedge against is if rates go up, you wait until the transaction to close your call date, because you have to call within 30 days' notice. So we're calling now in like 60 days. If we wait until that period for 30 days, we have a chance that interest rates could go up and move away from us, then we can eat away the savings that we would have on the transaction.
I guess I'm thinking longer term. I'm an equity person, so I don't know as much about how taxes work for bonds. But so if I buy a security and I sell it within six months, I pay a different tax rate on the gain than I would if I held it for two years, right? Is it the same with bonds? Like, are we...
Well, these are, yeah, these are tax exempt security.
Okay.
So there's no risk to the district with respect to, you know, when you issue the bonds. If you're the end purchaser of the transaction, that's kind of how it goes.
Different, yeah.
What we're talking about from the district. We've seen a tremendous line of demand for unis over the last year. Now, give you an example, we sold bond, 20-year bonds, two days, late last week for a school district in Alhama, $58 million in bonds, 20-year money at a 145, which was unheard of like three, four years ago. So just the demand is so, so great right now. We're seeing rates that we've never seen in history. We sold one-year notes today for a school district in Albany County at a 0.19. So the demand is just terrific. Just took a good time to be in the market, and it's really lining up perfectly with the call date coming up in August and rates being so low in the current market.
It's good.
And, I mean, we're selling bonds Thursday for City of Buffalo, 63 million bonds, 12-year term. We've already had like eight or nine investment banks signed up to bid on the transaction. The demand is just really strong, and we would expect nothing, nothing less than what we would see at, you know, Amherst coming to the market in the next month or so.
So as long as there's no additional questions or concerns, I guess the question I would want to know is, are we okay moving forward with approving item E1D in the new business to pass the refunding resolution that would allow us to move forward on the timeline presented?
Mr. Bevel, are you good?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you proactively reaching out to us with this opportunity.
Keeping along the line of finance, Mrs. Wazinski is here with our proposed 21-22 budget. As you may have seen over the break, the state finalized their budget, which we expect to be enacted and signed by the governor soon. There was finally some good news for us out of Albany. Seems like our advocacy effort over the year may have hit home with our legislators as we saw some positive movement, especially in the area of foundation aid.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to present for you the final time. We'll go over the changes at the meetings since our March presentation, and then at the end, we'll, of course, take any questions that you may have, but also ask the board to give us a verbal approval that you agreed to the expenditure limit that we would put before the voters. And this will appear on the next agenda, which is next week, Tuesday, for your adoption. So I mean, there are no other changes. So previously, in our last presentation, we touched on the concerns we had with the executive proposal. So Superintendent L and I are going to tag team on this one a little bit, but we brought forth to you and kind of talked through some examples in four different areas of the executive budget, and we're going to touch on those again and let you know where things landed with the legislative budget. We do have some changes on the revenue side because of the state updates that came out. And then we'll go over our overall budget in a summary, but we've got no changes on the expenditure side. So it's been the same now for two meetings. We haven't made adjustments, but we do have a balanced budget to present to you. So one of the areas of concern we had was that expense-based aid would be lumped together in the service of aid and then subsequently capped in future years. This would be detrimental to every district because our expenses change and those aids are meant to offset those expenses. Fortunately, that did not pass, and our expense-based aid remains the same, and they're determined by prior year expenditure. So there was no change there, which was a great thing. The STAR program was a proposal that Governor Cuomo had added into the state aid runs, which again would be capped, and it negatively affected our taxpayers. That didn't happen, so the STAR program remains in tact, so it still maintains its original intent, which is tax relief for our property donors. The third item that we want to revisit was the proposal that federal stimulus monies that were coming from the federal government to school districts were being diverted back to New York State, similar to CARES Act money. And the second stimulus program, which was the CRRSAA program, also showed on our tax, our state aid runs of the executive budget as a deduct. So we were very concerned about that, but fortunately, that did not happen. The CRRSAA, which is about $2.9 million for Amherst, and the third stimulus package, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, which for Amherst is $3.1 million, are going to flow directly to the district. They're not going to be withheld by state. They are going to be incorporated into our federal fund, which is where we account for all of our federal grants. So it is separate from our general fund budget, which is what we'll be talking about tonight. That works very well for tracking purposes, and it also makes it much easier to carry those funds from fiscal year to fiscal year. It doesn't fall the fund balance, which also is important because we have the opportunity to use this almost $6 million over three, almost four years. So the monies are available for stimulus two, the CRRSAA, through September of '22, and the ARPA is through September of '23. And then on top of that, we have additional 12 months to use those funds as rollover monies if needed. So we still need a lot of guidance and details from the state on how we're able to use these monies. We know what some of the criteria are. We know we're going to have to apply for it, similar to the CARES Act. We know we're going to have to have public comment periods. We know we're going to have to do grant allocations. But knowing that the money is coming to us, you know, we can start planning on how we're going to decrease some of the learning gaps that may have happened this year, summer programming, transportation, HVAC. There's a long laundry list that we've all been talking about for weeks and weeks on what we might spend this money on if we were to get it. So now that we know it's coming, we can start that process.
Mrs. Wazinski, do we have to share any of that?
No, we do not. There is a separate piece of both of these plans that was allocated specifically to the non-public schools and charter schools. So the allocations coming directly to the public schools are strictly priorities, which was different than the CARES Act was. I don't think anybody liked that process, and I don't think the state liked it either because it was just as much a headache for them as it was for us.
Well, you may recall, when we first presented this proposal, you know, we were concerned we were headed for another financial cliff like we experienced back in 2008, '09 with the gap elimination adjustment. And the original CARES Act money that was in our state aid runs for the current year were mapped dollar for dollar in terms of a deduction in the form of a pandemic adjustment. So our concern is that if the money came through in the state aid runs and then was equally deducted, that when the, if the deduction remained, you know, in the years where the federal dollars were gone, that we would have a pretty significant gap afterwards. And thankfully, our legislators did not let that proposal go through from the executive budget. So there was a lot of good news in terms of our legislators really understanding the issues that we were facing with the executive proposal, and I think advocating strongly on our behalf in Albany.
So the fourth area that we wanted to bring up with you is the foundation aid. So originally, foundation aid was proposed to be frozen for the second year in a row, so we would have been at $7.6 million, which is what we were in 1920. And we actually saw an increase of $1.7 million in our foundation aid. So that was a very pleasant surprise. Where now and how do we...
So the $1.7 million is addition to the 2.8 and the 3.1. So we're really about 7-8?
Well, the two stimulus packages are not state aid. So they're federal aid and they're the...
I understand that.
But yes, it's that much of an increase. So those monies are F fund monies or special aid fund, so they're not part of our general fund budget, but the $1.7 in foundation aid is part of our general fund budget. Which is one of the reasons why it's happy that it was separated.
Yeah, the federal stimulus dollars are not intended to be used as a revenue source to close your revenue budget. They're separate from our revenue budget to have for expenses related to the pandemic to allow us to reopen safely and address areas of concern related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
But we can propose, for example, hiring extra staff to cover, you know, learning loss or whatever it may be, and use those federal funds for that.
Yeah.
But that would be kept in a separate kind of budget, so to speak.
The stimulus monies in the federal fund have 13 different criteria that you have to fit the budget within, and they're all going to be closing the learning gap, decreasing class sizes, transportation, providing meals, increasing facilities, HVAC.
Pretty much all the stuff we...
Everything that the CARES Act...
All the stuff we spent close $2 million on for the opening of this year.
Right.
You mentioned PPE, nurse, extra nursing staff, cleaning staff, you know, all of those things.
Whereas the foundation aid, that pays more, and through March of '21. The foundation aid is every district's largest amount of unrestricted revenue. So you have transportation aid that's offsetting prior areas, high-cost aid and excess cost aid that are offsetting your expenses of prior special aid. Foundation aid is your operating aid. So having the increase of 1.7 in that area was great for us, but it, that is the money that we kind of use to close our gap, not use fund balance or, you know, that is the money that's unrestricted and used only for operating of the district.
Mrs. Wazinski, follow up on Mrs. Goldhaw's question. So if we can go back to March of 2020, does that mean some of that federal money might be replenished, what we've spent already out of our general fund?
It could, yes. So in our, for example, our CARES Act allocation, we have not a lot, but about, I want to say maybe $10,000 of that was from purchases made in the prior fiscal year. So when that money comes in, we'll attribute it to those expenses, but it'll end up falling apart from ours. Purposely, we tried to keep the CARES Act allocation in the current year because we were spending more in the current year. We had kind of already covered last year's expenses, that year was over. We actually... We actually received our first CARES Act payment this week. So if you think about how long that took, you know, the application was in since November and all of that money was meant to help schools reopen and we didn't get it until April. So if we hadn't had that money available in our budget, including the C line and different areas, we really would have struggled even more. So we tried to keep the application in the current fiscal year, knowing that some majority of our expenses were.
Yeah, and I think our eyes are turned forward relative to these two stimulus packages only because we were able to successfully open with the expenditures that we had. And we know moving forward, you know, we have a lot of challenges that we face with, you know, students' social and emotional well-being, you know, our ability to lower our class sizes so that we can maintain appropriate distancing, addressing some of the learning gaps that may have been created by the hybrid programming that we were forced to implement. So I think our goal would be to look towards the future with the current two. You may recall, as we were ending last year and coming into this year, you know, there was a lot of uncertainty. You know, there was the threat of a 20% reduction in our state aid and the governor had three or four points at the apple throughout the year to monitor potentially cut our aid for this year. We were expecting that maybe our Erie County sales tax revenue was going to be down and pleasantly, as a pleasant surprise, that has not been the case. We do know we're going to experience a loss of revenue in our transportation aid because of not using buses for three months last year. But our, you know, our fund balance, I believe we started the year around $11 million. We've always targeted around $8 million as our goal and we were prepared to offset any revenue losses with that money, which is why we exceeded the 4% allowable limit. And I don't, you know, obviously we have a number of months to go, but we're not experiencing the revenue losses that could have happened in the current year. So there's a lot of positive news all around. But moving forward, I really want to emphasize the significance of this foundation aid increase. You've seen a lot of these numbers in the past, but this is our foundation aid from the beginning of time here when the foundation aid formula was adopted. And as you can see, going back to 2007, we've always been, you know, around under 60% of our full funding amount. And it's very frustrating to see, you know, what could be in the second column from the right compared to what we were getting. And even in the most recent years, going back to '17, '18, our increases were very minimal and then they were flat from 1920 to 2021, even though the full phase in amount does go up slightly every year. So this year, looking at '21, '22, we saw a $1.7 million increase, bringing us up to 66% of our full funding. But if you recall, Gene and Paul met with our legislators, you know, we mentioned to them that money can't just continue to go into the formula and be distributed because, you know, the formula is not structured in a way where things can get caught up, except for this year. They had four categories of foundation aid increase that you would fall into. One would be a 2% increase. There was another one that would be based on your foundation aid per pupil amount. There was another increase based on being at least 60% of your full amount. And I can't recall what the fourth one is off the top of my head, but each district fell into the category of whichever of those four categories would give them the greatest benefit. So ours, you can see we've now at $9.3 million, our 66% of our full foundation aid, which still leaves us with $4.8 million for full funding. But the good news is, is there's language in the enacted budget that talks about fully funding this formula over the next two years, with 50% of the remaining balance being distributed next year and then another 50% following year. I think that would be contingent upon whether or not the money is available from the state because overall statewide, to fully fund that formula, they estimate it's about $4 billion. But regardless, at $9.3 million, you know, that's our new current level and we haven't seen over the course of time a reduction. So there's positive news moving to 66%. What was even more, I think, pleasing to see was the next page where we presented, you know, the Erie County numbers. And you may recall when we presented this in the past, there were districts that were over 100% of their foundation aid. So the legislators really did take into account that there were districts getting more than their full amount. And you can see on this list, there's not one district that's over 100%. And obviously, there's still some districts like ourselves and Chittiwanga that are in the 60s. But moving forward, the money that's available will continue to be distributed in an equitable fashion as opposed to just the same for everyone, you know? And so that was nice to see that those people that are at 100% will probably move up with save harmless to whatever their full foundation aid due goes up to, which is roughly around 2% from year to year. If you go and look back at our history, you know, the number started at $9.4 million back in '07, '08 and is now $14 million, but it's inched up a little bit every year. So the districts that are at 100% will probably stay at 100%, but they won't exceed it. And then the districts that need to be caught up, we're expecting that potentially based on what's being, the language that's in the current budget, could potentially be 50% of that amount next year and 50% the following year, or roughly $2.4 million next year and $2.4 the following year.
You know, it's really a sad state of affairs when we're happy with 66% of what we're supposed to be getting. You know, losing $4.8 million from '07, we've lost, I don't know, $50 to $70 million that's come out of local taxpayers? So, you know, we can be gracious about this, but, you know, as a district, we've got a hammer. And, you know, it's our local shareholders, our local taxpayers that are paying for it. And so to me, you know, we're down at $4.8 million this year. Yeah, we're at 66. Now we're the, now we're the second worst. You know, we wouldn't accept that if that was educational results. We shouldn't be accepting that if they're financial results. It's the same thing to me. That's horrible. Yeah, they gave us more money, but this is horrible.
Well, it's all relative. So I think it was based on our expectations, based on history. So I would say happy is a relative term because it was based on what we were expecting, based on what we've had. So this was the most significant increase we've experienced since the beginning of the formula. And then there's also a commitment moving forward to continue to put money in the appropriate place. And I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. I did receive a phone call the day after the budget was adopted from one of our legislators and that was the first thing I said, because I said, wow, this is great. This is progress, but we still have a ways to go. We've got a lot of work to do.
Well, and I think.
But we have never been in a situation that I can recall that you'll see where we're able to balance our budget without having to use fund balance and reserves. So I think your point is well taken and while, you know, maybe we're in the third round of the fight, you know, it's certainly not the end, but we're continuing to advocate and talk to our legislators about the need for that 66 to get closer to 100. So now is not the time to, you know, take our foot off the gas. We certainly need to continue to be aggressive in our advocacy.
And knowing that those advocacy efforts are finding success, like this is the first time that we've ever seen anything like these changes. Even the language saying that in two years, 50% each year in everyone, like that's never happened before. So that is a great success for the advocacy efforts of the two. Good? All right. So with that increase in state aid, we were able to modify our revenues. So we did have $1.7 million in state aid, which brought us up to $18.8 million. We did increase that a little more than that, $149,000, and that's in the multi-aid for the IPA that we did this year that the state doesn't know about yet, but that aid will come next year as well. So that is included. We had that included previously, but it's included again now. And then transfers, we originally had $840,000 from reserves, $704,000 from unappropriated fund balance, about $1.5 million already in our budget with still budget gap of $150,000. So we were able to not only close our budget gap without reducing our expenditures, but we were able to reduce our reserve appropriation from 700 or from $840,000 down to $92,000. And then at $92,000 is $60,000 for our tax cert reserve, which we have in there every year because we have an equal expenditure line. And if we don't need it, we don't use it. And the other $32,000 is for unemployment expenses. And again, we have money, a $20,000 line on the expenditure side for unemployment expenses. And the extra $12,000 is because we haven't made unemployment payments for now, this is the second year, because of the pandemic and the zoomer in amount of fraud, we have withheld payments and then the state suspended payments on their own until they could sort everything out and make sure that the claims that they were sending to districts were legitimate. So we have that in there so that if we have two years worth of payments that we have to make, we have the availability for it. But again, if we don't get the claims, we won't use that reserve money. And then on the fund balance side, we increased our appropriated fund balance from $704,000, and that's what we used last year to reduce our gap, to $806,000. And we chose that number because that equals our contingency line. So all along, we've been saying that our contingency line is in our appropriation budget for unforeseen expenses, emergency flexibility in our budget because of the unknowns that are coming.
Healthcare.
Healthcare is a big one. Normally it's about $500,000, but at our last meeting, we talked about increasing that $806,000, which was the amount of the retirement breakage that we could have reduced our budget by. But instead of reducing our budget, we chose to leave it in there, not knowing what will come for the summer or for next year, recovery, a remote academy, or what may be needed. We left that in there, even though we do have the stimulus money coming our way because similar to CARES Act money, we have no idea when that stimulus money is actually going to flow to us. And we want to make sure that our budget can support the learning that our kids need and they're not the ones left waiting until we start getting the stimulus money in. So again, we always try to not use our contingency money. And if we don't use it, it's fully funded by fund balance, so it doesn't affect our taxpayers and we're not increasing or letting to fund that. If for some reason we decided we weren't going to have that contingency money anymore, it would equally get cut out of both sides of the budget, so it wouldn't affect the other budget lines and it still wouldn't affect our taxpayers. All of that together leaves us with a revenue budget of $64.3 million, which is a 3% increase. There were no changes to staffing. There were no changes to expenditures, health insurance, transportation, all of that stayed the same, leaving us with a $64.3 million expenditure budget, 3.03% increase in spending year over year of balanced budget.
And I think the other thing to point out too is, you know, there's the $1.7 million increase in foundation aid, but from our last budget presentation, our aid projections were about $1.5 billion less than this because of Mrs. Wazinski's wonderful crystal ball. But, so we didn't exactly, you know, we were close in our projections, but in summary, we were able to close our gap and remove any reliance on reserves or fund balance to do that, which was great.
So in summary, our revenues went up 1.9, our expenditures went up 1.9, both 3% increase. Our balance, our budget is balanced, using $92,000 in reserves, which are equally offset by expenditure line, and $806,000 in fund balance, also equally opposite by expenditure line. The capital reserve, we talked about a couple meetings ago, so that'll be a resolution for our voters to consider. And we're happy to answer any questions that you make out, but there are no changes to this on the next coordinating on April 20th. There will be a resolution for the board to adopt our expenditure limit, which is these $64.3 million, which is what our voters, they don't approve our revenues or where we're spending at, we disclose that to them, but the only thing that they're required to approve us is our spending limit.
Do you need everybody, do you need us to approve that right now?
Or if there's any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Is this bold enough? Are you good with that, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
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 All right. So that was kind of our, our.
Much work.
Thank you.
Keeping in the theme of good news out of Albany.
Is that your version of a life hack?
I would have been much more dramatic.
So I can give you a very brief overview. As you are aware, also over the break on Friday night at around 5:30 PM, New York State updated its guidance for schools, which in summary is allowing some reduction of the social distancing requirement of six feet. So we received that guidance and fortunately, we've been planning all along, as Mrs. McGlaughlin had mentioned, our committees have been active throughout February and March. Specifically, we increased our activity after the March 19th issuance of the CDC guidance. And fortunately, the updated guidance from New York State is almost identical to the CDC's updated guidance. And in fact, when you look through the document, in many cases, they reference and link right to the CDC guidance. So our planning was right on target by us using the CDC guidance as our guidelines. I will tell you that one of the contingencies upon social distancing is the rates that are, exist within the community, which the CDC and New York State define as accounting. So this chart shows the thresholds for community transmission of COVID-19. So you can see they put us in four color-coded categories of low transmission up to high transmission. And they use two metrics, one which is the percent positivity and the other one on top here, which is the total new cases per 100,000 persons in the past seven days. So in order to determine which category you're in, they calculate both to take the highest one. So if our number of cases per 100,000 in the county was 50, but our positivity rate was five, they would say that we're in orange because they use the higher of the two metrics. So Erie County probably three or four weeks ago stopped reporting on their social media and their press conferences, they stopped reporting the percentage and the positivity rate, I think in anticipation of, or in alignment with the CDC's updated guidance. And they've only been reporting for the past few weeks, this number of per 100,000. So this is just sort of the general structure. This is what was posted on the Erie County Department of Health's social media today. And of course, there's always a day lag in the reporting. So as of April 12th, So as of April 12th, there was 493 new cases and the total of 369 total new cases per 100,000 in the past seven days. So at this point, we are over three times what is considered to be high transmission, which is greater than or equal to 100 cases per 100,000 in the past seven days. So we're at 369. So there's good news, bad news. I'm trying to find silver linings these days, but I may not be joining in my celebration of good news. But there are, there's been a lot of bad news in the past year and a half. So this was actually very, gave us a lot of hope and reason for optimism. So here's a summary of what is allowable under the new guidance based on these training condition rates. So you can see in elementary schools, they allow physical distancing of three feet between students at all four levels of transmission, which is what has allowed us to move forward with our plan to have elementary students return full-time in person to the classroom starting April 26th. And at the middle and high school, however, when you get to orange and red, at orange, they suggest that kids can still be three feet and cohorting is recommended. Cohorting, for lack of a better term, is like a classroom that, or the kids stay together all day long. And most of you have middle and high school children. You know, that's not how middle and high school is structured. You know, middle and high school kids go to different classes every period, typically 40, 42 minutes. And they're with different kids in each of their classes. If they were co-horted, they might go to a different classroom for a different subject, but they'd still be with the same kids that they were in and they'd travel as a group all day long. It's not really something that exists in middle and high schools. And it's certainly not something that can be implemented in late April or, you know, early May in a school year. It may be something if the rates stay above 100 over the summer, looking towards September, that we would need to look at in the middle school. But at the high school, it's almost impossible to cohort kids just because of the different levels, the different courses, all the different needs of the kids. So in red, we, schools can only use three feet of distancing if the kids are co-horted. If they can't, if they're not co-horted, we're still required to stay at six feet, which is why our middle and high schools are remaining hybrid until that rate comes down to a number in the substantial transmission range. But our elementary students, as you can see, are able to now go from six feet to three feet. So we've been working on a generic timeline. And once we, the guidance was adopted, we were able to put some actual dates to it. So on Monday, you know, we started some of our messaging to the parents and to the faculty and staff that we, the guidance was received and what was allowable. Mr. Crozier held a faculty meeting at Smallwood to inform them of the plan to return students to elementary school. Today, our administrative cabinet met for an extended period of time to revise our reopening plans because we were told that the Erie County Department of Health would be reviewing them as well as the State Education Department. Late this afternoon, we received an email from careatpain@ecdoh with an email address for us to email a copy of our revised plan as well as a link to our plan on our website. So we're working to make sure that we revise our plan. As you remember, it's quite large. So it's a big undertaking and we had our whole administrative cabinet working on it today. And we should be able to submit that, if not by the end of this week, probably by the end of next week. But we just want to make sure everything's being reviewed by all of our committees. Mr. Pigeon had a high school faculty meeting today to go over some of the information that I'm presenting tonight. Tomorrow, we have our elementary and middle school building reopening committees meeting to put the finishing touches on our building base plans, our health and safety plans. Windermere and middle school are having faculty meetings. And then tomorrow, we're having a joint middle and high school town hall meeting at 5:00 PM, really just to communicate to the parents, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it. You know, why are we staying in hybrid? What does cohorting mean? You know, what are these levels of transmission? Where are we? Similar to what you see, you're seeing tonight. On Thursday, the high school reopening committee is meeting. And again, the middle and high school, although they're staying hybrid, you know, we want to make sure our plans are getting revised for when we get below that level so we're prepared to bring kids back. If not, obviously, we need to turn an eye towards September because our hope is that this is the last time the guidance will be revised and we'll be working with this guidance moving into next school year. On Friday, our elementary parent survey closes. So that was sent out on Monday where we're asking parents to commit to a model for the remainder of the year, either full-time in person or fully remote. So we, those responses are starting to come in. And I suspect there's some folks who want to attend the town hall before they answer that question. So we have that opportunity for them before the deadline. And then next week, we'll be sending information to our transportation contractor for student about who's riding the buses so they can balance out the buses and the routes. And to the extent possible, we can have one child per seat on the buses. There's no guarantee there, but hopefully, we get good information from our parents about their intentions for using our transportation and so that we can plan accordingly with our routing. In addition, our building administrators will be reviewing the survey data next week to balance classes. So you may have some classroom changes at the elementary level if kids who were fully remote are choosing to come back full-time or vice versa. If we see classes where we have an imbalance, like if there's a second grade class of 18 and another second grade class of 11, you know, we may look, balance those out. But our goal would be to make sure that the kids, the changes to teachers, excuse me, the changes are minimal because as you can imagine, it's very difficult at the end of April to get a new teacher when you've gone through the whole school year with the same teacher. So, you know, in the interest of health and safety, we want our classes to be as low as possible across the board and balanced. But our goal would be not to have too many classroom changes or teacher changes. And then also next week, our building administrators would communicate any changes to teachers and parents about class placements. Our bus routes will be loaded into Aspen and building administrators will email parents to check the photo for updated transportation lists. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of work that needs to happen for us to be prepared. Luckily, we were proactive in our approach and we were planning all along. But once we got the official guidance from New York State, we were able to move forward with a staggered return of elementary schools to full-time in-person instruction, April 26th with pre-K K1 and 5, and then May 3rd, grades 2, 3, and 4. I will point out, and this is something we have to point out in our town hall meetings, Erie County and the CDC have not changed their criteria for identifying close contacts or contact tracing and subsequently quarantines. So they are still staying with the definition of anyone who was within six feet of an infected person for 10 consecutive minutes or more. So in an elementary classroom where there may be three to six feet of distance between students, if a student or, if a student were to test positive, we may have two to three, maybe four, depending on where the student's seated. You might have a kid in front, back, left, and right, who may be required to quarantine as a result of the county and the CDC continuing to contact trace at six feet. The guidance is pretty clear that adults should be six feet apart from each other as well as students at all times. And many, most of our adults who wanted the vaccine have had the opportunity to get it at this point. But if we were to have an adult test positive, if they're following the guidelines set forth, we shouldn't have any close contacts identified if they're maintaining six feet from kids and from the other adults in the building. But for those of you that have been in an elementary classroom, it's very difficult for an elementary teacher to teach from six feet away from the kid at all times. It's also difficult to keep the kids six feet away from each other. So our elementary classrooms are going to look quite different than what they normally do. They'll be, kids will be in rows. You know, we won't have them on the carpets in parts of the room. We won't have them over horseshoe cables in small groups like we normally would have. But right now, our goal is to get everybody in full-time. And then obviously, as things improve and we move forward, we'll be hopefully able to re-implement those best practices instructionally that we've done for many years. So we plan, I wanted to give you this update because this information is very fresh and there's been a lot of talk about it in the news media. Our plan after all of this happens is to have our principals here next week to present the full details of the reopening plans. So we can expect to have that on the agenda for next Tuesday. I just wanted to give you the broad strokes here.
So what color, I'm not clear, what color do we have to be at for middle and high school kids?
Orange. So that would mean we would have to be between 50 or we'd have to be below 99 cases per 100,000.
So I have a question that you didn't have an answer to, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. Since this thing started, have we ever been below that number?
There is a tool where I may be able to find it.
Because those two numbers don't seem to jive.
No. And I will tell you, you're speaking Mr. Bellisle's language right now because he's a psychologist and he can't understand how two metrics about the same thing can be so drastically different and you would, and that would be acceptable and we would use the higher of the two. I forgot, I'm not on my computer here. But the CDC did embed in their guidance a tool. And I, and I'll, you know, if I can't find it quickly or I can't decipher it quickly, I'll send it to you. But underneath this chart that I copied out of here, they have a COVID tracker, which is a pretty neat tool. You can select any state. So if I go and select New York. What's interesting, if you look at New York overall, the whole state is pretty much red with the exception of one or two counties. But then I could go and select Erie County. And it tells us here that we're in a high transmission area. And again, you look at the map of all the counties in New York, I see, you know, four orange and one yellow, maybe five orange, six, and the rest are red. But when you scroll down here, they've added vaccination information, which is kind of neat. But this shows where our cases per 100,000 have been since January of 2021. So what I would have to do is probably play with this slider, which I've never done, to go back and see, you know, where we've been over time to get that answer to your question. But right now, according to the CDC, we're at 363 per 100K. But the percent positivity is 10.19. So again, going back to their chart.
So we are.
So. Yeah, so now they've aligned a little bit more. But there was a time when our percent positivity rate was under 5% and our number per 100,000 was like 150 or 160. And it was really puzzling. Now they're a little bit more aligned. So the question you asked, although I don't have a direct answer for it, the question you have is the one that kind of came to me when I saw this and I subsequently brought to the team and specifically Lynn, which is if this remains our guidance, we may not be out of the woods come September. I don't know how quickly that number per 100,000 will drop. I mean, right now, we're seeing a little bit of an increase. But for it to get below 100, I don't know if it will be, how many months it will take or how things will progress. So of course, we were focusing on reopening full-time for elementary right now. But in the next couple of weeks, we're going to quickly turn an eye towards September to make sure that our plans for in-person, hybrid, and fully remote are pretty fluid if we have to move between the three of them throughout the year. My hope is that we'll start the year in orange or lower and we'll stay there for the whole year. But no one can tell at this point.
Is it possible for us as board members to get registration links for all the town hall meetings?
Yeah, I think so. I think I have them all.
Yeah, most of us with students in particular, they still have gotten them on through our kids. But I'd like to listen to them on our elementary.
Yeah, we have, I think I can pull those together into one email and send them to you. Yeah. Can you just remind me? Any other questions? And we did offer the opportunity for folks to submit questions in advance of the town halls. So we're gearing our presentation towards the updates in the guidance, the updates in our plans. And then we're also hoping to address the frequently asked questions. And then our plan would be to publish a frequently asked question document next week on our website for those that couldn't attend. Okay.
I think I would like to say that, you know, you guys have been all over this all along. But even now, you know, and it's impressive just what the schedule for this week looks like, that very people pulled that all together and, you know, get this moving as quickly as you are. It's very impressive.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort and we've got everybody working on, rowing in the same direction and working towards the same goal. I think there was, I hesitate to say, some excitement when we got the new guidance, even though there is some reason to be disappointed, especially for our high school and middle school students. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things where we now have to look towards September because if we're able to go less than six feet in a co-horted model, we don't have a schedule, we've never had a schedule like that in our middle school. So we may need to develop something like that, which may allow us to get K to A in full-time. High school is a, is a whole different kettle of fish. So I, I don't imagine I would ever see a high school cohort in schedule that would offer kids the opportunity to take the classes they want and need and still stay with the same group of kids from period to period. That just, and I'm a pretty out of the box creative thinker, but that, I haven't come up with a way that that could be done. It certainly could be done at the middle school. But it will take some work and it will have to have multiple schedules and be able to move fluidly between them. So there's still a lot of work to do to prepare for September. In addition to what you also saw was the updated guidance for graduation and your ceremonies and prompts. So we got that yesterday at, yesterday afternoon, which is, which is good. But there's obviously a lot of restrictions and a lot of hoops that we have to jump through in order to be able to provide our kids with appropriate ceremonies to honor the accomplishments that they're achieving at the end of the year. But we were able to do it last year and we're confident we'll be able to do it this year and we'll give our kids the celebrations they deserve. Next, so that was sort of an impromptu thing on the agenda. I hope you don't mind me adding that one. Obviously, we set the agenda before spring break and that all of that information came out during the break. But I didn't want to lose the opportunity to provide you with some information about the reopening guidance and an update. We also have our teachers and students of the month from a, with a virtual presentation from. from Mr. Penella.
Thank you as always to Superintendent Penella and our Board of Education for the opportunity to present the Amherst Central High School Student of the Month and Teacher of the Month. We have quite a list to present to you this evening, and so without further ado, I will jump right in, because it's always an exciting opportunity to shine a spotlight on the wonderful students and staff at Amherst Central High School. Starting with January, Alex Kang was nominated Student of the Month. Alex is a top, top academic student, a wonderful, wonderful student, and really came to our attention this year especially. He's volunteered in our Wednesday Remote Learning Support Study Sessions through the National Honor Society Peer Tutoring Program, and has done a wonderful job. So congratulations, Alex. Iris Isadorzak, again, a top academic student, very active at Amherst Central High School in a number of different realms, especially down in the music wing, and academically very strong, and a very nice young lady, so congratulations to Iris. Also Nate Clor, Nate has been a very active student for many years at Amherst Central High School in his senior year. This year, he is a leader in the classroom and has been one of the leaders in our unified sports program. He is an adopting founder of the program, and we will really miss Nate next year as he moves on to his college of choice, and he's done a great job for four years. Congratulations, Nate. Teacher of the Month, January, John Heims. John Heims, the department chair for the Business and Computer Technology Department. John is just a leader in so many different regards, always there to help and assist, always super flexible with students and involved in many, many aspects, specifically leadership of our Amherst Academies and all the programs under that program umbrella. So congratulations to John Heims, very deserving. And Ms. Sersak in our Student Services Office, counselor extraordinaire, always there for the students, very thoughtful in her approaches with both our students and our families, thorough and meticulous and a leader. She has been very, very much a huge leader this year as the pandemic unfolded and the needs of students were very, very great. Ms. Sersak was always there for them, so congratulations to Ms. Sersak. Moving on to February, Libby Stoloff. Libby Stoloff was brought to our attention, wonderful young lady and student, and has really helped out down in the music wing this year, has taken many leadership roles. And as you know, the music department in general has really stepped up, and they've needed leadership of students like Libby, so congratulations to Libby for being recognized for her leadership and Student of the Month. Also Aaron Phelong, a humble but very wise young man, one of the top achievers at Amherst Central High School. Aaron has had a wonderful run for four years, and he's got great things ahead of him, so congratulations to Aaron. Ms. Saladino is being recognized as Teacher of the Month for February, very fitting for her. A February has been a big part of her repertoire for Black History Month. She's always been a big part of that as being a leader of our Challenge to Change movement in Amherst. Annually, she organizes the Black History Month program and the Challenge to Change summits, and has been extremely active this year with Challenge to Change and UB School of Social Work to really keep that effort moving forward in a virtual manner. And we do have an upcoming summit next week, April 21st, if I'm not mistaken. So congratulations, there'll be many students across Western New York that have been touched by her work for over five years in this realm, and really for many, many years at Amherst. Mr. Pomitlars, a known commodity at Amherst and in the community. He has gone above and beyond this year, putting just wonderful things out there, the whole music department in general. Specifically, Justin, again, was part of our Black History Month program and did a symposium that was just outstanding and a fitting tribute to the month, and just a nice musical collection and a great experience for our students. So congratulations to Mr. Pomitlars. Moving on to March, Liam Turhune in his element, another leader in many, many regards. He's also been recognized for just being a leader down in that music wing and across the board, just a wonderful student, and contributes in many ways, in a positive way at Amherst Central High School. So congratulations to Liam. Rebecca Grande, you might have heard about our Mental Health Awareness Week that happened right before the break. Rebecca led that, and when I say led it, she really led it. She did and organized almost everything. There was a wonderful group of students involved, but we handed the baton to Rebecca, and she just took it and took it for a victory. It was a great week, and she is an outstanding leader, and she's got a bright future ahead in leadership for certain. Rebecca is involved in so many different realms. You may see her on our Action News 13 on a weekly basis. She's one of our broadcasters and anchor women, so congratulations to Rebecca, always a go-to student. Nila Arson, a new student to Amherst and has been recognized as a student that is really, really well-prepared and working hard from home remotely, but also in the building a few days a week, and really has done a good job this year. She is part of our ENL program and is really emerged as a wonderful student. Related to that is Mr. Ike, who is another wonderful gentleman, always there for our students. He is involved in so many different ways in our community. He's also a Boy Scout leader in our community, the local troop, and he also does our after-school AMP program, helping students that need extra help after school. Mr. Ike, congratulations, well-recognized and well-deserved, I should say, Teacher of the Month. As well as Ms. Susan Lash, related to Nila, Nisan's nomination, who I just featured a few slides ago. Ms. Lash is very, very much involved with our ENL population, is, just goes above and beyond for them. Her room is kind of like a home for many, many of our students, and students travel in and out of there as if it's their home, and she's like their school mom. So we really appreciate the heart and mind of Ms. Lash and what she gives to all of our students, both ENL and her English students alike. Wonderful job this month, and always, Ms. Lash. So thank you for this annual, or I should say, monthly opportunity to present our wonderful Students of the Month and Teachers of the Month at Amherst Central High School. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Great, and we will need a motion for new business items.
Make a motion, new business items, E1, A through K, 2, A through E, 3, A and D.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through K, 2, A through E, and 3, A and D, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Custody, any follow-up action items?
We have one, and that is to send the board members registration links for all the town meetings.
Agreed. We do not have effective session, so we will need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mrs. Goldhawk, all of those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0.